Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on December 3rd, 2019, and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And if you'd care to, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now, for adoption of the agenda, are there any changes to today's agenda to be suggested? Otherwise, they entertain a motion for adoption?
Yes. I'd like to have us pull Item 10, Number 9, Discussion and Consideration of Economic Development Programming and Funding Priorities. That'll be coming back on next week's agenda, instead with some different background information, probably will help us guide our discussion.
Okay, and we have LeAnn Harder scheduled today to present. Is that okay with you, LeAnn? Okay. We'll pull, okay, so then I would entertain a motion to approve the, adopt the agenda with the one item to be pulled for December 10.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we go to public comment, Number 1, and that's for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address a topic, would you please move to the microphone over there? Seeing nobody moving to the microphone, I will close public comment, and we'll go into agency reports, and we will hear from Kaylin Peterson with RSVP. Good morning.
Hi.
Is that the same one that you sent electronically?
Yeah, it was a pre-copy.
Oh, is it? Okay. All right. I'm going. Thank you. You're a light color.
Yeah. I also had to tweak a couple of typos.
Okay.
So, I heard that the post-updated. So, well, first of all, thank you. Thanks for having me, and thanks for your support of RSVP. I appreciate that. So, you have our annual report in front of you, so I thought might be easiest just to kind of review that. So, this year, we actually decided to feature the fact that our transportation program began its 10th year of service in Story County, which is kind of hard to believe, but it was January 2010, and so we're wrapping up on that 10th year. And it was kind of fun, because we hadn't actually put the statistic together collectively for that 10-year period, and so it was interesting to find out that we've had a total of 113 different drivers that have traveled 151,615 miles, and we've served 332 Story County residents over that 10-year period. Last year, we've served 98 residents, but we still have about 150 that are actually registered with our transportation program. And a lot of them, I think, because they have, there is an application process, they have to register. We are a backup to their existing support system, so they are ready to go if they need a ride. The other significant thing for us in our four-county service area was, of course, the tornado that hit Marshalltown, and we initially, we do not have the same partnerships in Marshall County that we do in Story County in terms of our disaster services. So, in addition to, in Story County, in addition to our volunteer management services, we also have our transportation program, but we also have our volunteer management for disaster program. So, we have a contract with Emergency Management, as well as the City of Ames, and then partnerships with the City of Nevada, Story City, and Huxley. So, in the event of a disaster or emergency, when large numbers of volunteers need to be coordinated, we have pre-trained volunteers that will do that. We didn't have that same luxury in Marshall County, but we were actually meeting with Salvation Army there about how we might be able to help out, because it is part of our service area. And anyway, things kind of got rolling, and when we told them what we do over here in Story County, that's when they said, "But that's what we really need you to do here if you can do it." And so, we did temporarily redirect some human resources over to Marshall County. And actually, Salvation Army, they had been tasked with doing the coordination of volunteers, but their building had been hit, they had no electricity, and they also had other services they were trying to provide. So, we decided that we needed to kind of move in and help a little bit. It was temporarily without resources, because we were awarded a federal disaster grant that we applied for, that was awarded in September, and that helped offset all of those costs that we had incurred up to that point. So, we were able to activate a VRC. We had volunteers that were doing a lot of data entry, canvassing neighborhoods, assisting other agencies with a lot of different tasks, and then we also still continue to help coordinate volunteers over there with the rebuild. But it was actually a good experience for our volunteers. So, there was some benefit to pulling those volunteers from Story County, because they got an opportunity to activate in a real-time event. And I think it demonstrated how important it is to have volunteers that are ready to go and pre-trained, and I think I alluded to that in that section about disaster services. We also continue to provide our general services and education, reading tutors, we have a very large PENPAL program, our Speak Up program that is, it's been going now, I think, about probably 15 years, maybe longer. But we have pre-trained volunteers that go in, and they teach 5th graders public speaking skills, and that's been a very popular program as well. I guess I would just, I know you've had an opportunity to look through it, and I would be happy to address any questions you have about our annual report, or about any other services related to RSVP. No?
No.
Okay.
It's always been great to interact with you over the years, and your volunteers, and it's a wonderful service. Thank you.
Well, I always tell them, this is their annual report. This is really a culmination and a summary of what they've accomplished over the years. So, it's really fun to put together, because, you know, you get to see collectively what they've really done, and, you know, we're really proud of what they accomplished. So, thank you for letting me come and brag about them for a little bit.
Yeah, Kaylin, I'll have to say, too, I really like how you have this laid out with each of the different programs, how many volunteers and how many volunteer hours for each of those programs. It just, it shows the extent of your volunteers in each area.
Thank you. That's good to hear, because every year, we look at this and go, "Okay, do we need to change this up?" Or, so it's important to know that that's, that those are valuable things for you guys to see.
I have a question and a comment.
Yeah.
And it's a follow-up on what Supervisor Hiddens says. I assume you keep the same data year after year?
Yes.
So, you can go back and compare years. I think that's really important in an annual report, that you're consistent in data collection, so.
And actually, you know, because usually what I'll do is I'll use the format from the year before, and so then, when I'm going in and looking at numbers, there is an opportunity to see, have we had a significant drop in any area, and if so, why? Has there been a substantial increase? Usually, there's a reason if there's, you know, something like that happens, but we do have an opportunity to take a look at that.
And I also, I chair the Emergency Management Commission also, and Supervisor Hiddens and I recently went through some training there, and I just wanted to let you know that they commented on RSVP's role in case of emergency, and your help, your system to help coordinate volunteers, and they said that will be a crucial, you know, if we ever have to activate the emergency command center, that will be just crucial.
You know, I-
To have that support, and how appreciative they are of it. So, what you're saying about what happened to you in Marshalltown shows the advanced planning and how important that is.
Very much so, and I think on a lot of levels, but I, you know, I can almost see that Story County is like light-years ahead in terms of coordination of all the entities and preparation. And we also started about a year and a half ago partnering with Emergency Management to take over the role of the CDR Coordinator, or the Coalition for Disaster Recovery, and it's been a good partnership, because there was a lot of overlap between what our volunteer coordinator was doing with disaster, and also the role of that CDR coordinator. So, not only did it provide a little bit, some more financial resources to that disaster budget, but it also has been a really good partnership with Emergency Management, and so we're appreciative of that as well.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. Now, consideration of minutes, the minutes of the November 26th meeting, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of Personnel Actions would entertain a motion for approval of Personnel Actions as presented.
So moved. Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Motion carried. And now, Consent Agenda would entertain a motion, again, for items that are listed. Approval?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented, with the acknowledgement that Item Number 9 has been pulled for next week. Oh, that's an additional item. Sorry, I'm looking under the wrong page, so then I approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Aye.
Second.
Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Consent Agenda.
I'd just like to make a comment about Item Number 9, interestingly enough, okay? Oh, sorry, it's 8 on the Consent Agenda, but the bird-friendly Iowa application, and I don't see anybody here this morning from conservation, but I just want to say how impressed I was with the thoroughness of the application, and how the conservation staff and the volunteers who put this together worked to lay out all of the reasons that we are a bird-friendly county, including looking at the zoning and the number of acres we have under public, I've seen nodding from Amelia and Jerry. Did you help with that, Amelia? Good job! It was very impressive, so thank you.
Mike, we'll be here later, Mike Cox. You can convey that to him.
I'll tell him that, yeah.
Yes, I agree, there was, that's a lot of information in that document. It's very useful. Okay, then we will go on to public hearing items, and the item we have is the Third Consideration of Ordinance Number 286, amending Chapter 80 for the Plan Management Program and establishing effective date of 1/1/20. LeAnn, what would you like to add to what we've already heard about?
I've received no additional feedback from members of the public. I do want to just note the following steps after today's hearing. The ordinance will get passed on down to FEMA, or the DNR, to send forward to FEMA as well, and then we'll publish a summary in the paper. Again, the effective date would be January 1st, 2020.
Okay. Any questions for LeAnn, or any discussions?
No.
Just thank you for your work on it, LeAnn.
Yep. Thank you.
It's very bittersweet, actually.
I would move that-
It's a public hearing.
Sorry, thank you.
Excuse me. It will open the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the proposed ordinance? If so, would you please move to the microphone? Seeing no one moved to the microphone, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval on Third Consideration.
I will move for approval on Third Consideration of Ordinance Number 286.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Ordinance passes on Third Consideration. Then, additional items, we have, first, Kyle Bestie, Discussion and Consideration for IP Fax 36-Month Service Agreement from Orion. Good morning. Good morning, Kyle.
Morning, Board. So, a little background information, all of the county's fax lines currently come into the building on our old phone system, which I believe was installed 20-plus years ago. So, in an effort to get our fax lines off of that, we're going to slowly start moving them to other services. And Orion's IP faxing is about half of what a traditional POTS line would be, and Dispatch has had a few issues recently, faxing other police departments, so we thought that they would be a good, a good first, first choice, kind of kill two birds with one stone, get a fax line off, and hopefully help, help their faxing problem.
So, Kyle, for Dispatch, it sounds like they do use it-
Yes.
-on a regular basis. For some of our other fax machines going forward, are they getting a lot of use, given with, that we're on computers now?
We're going to give them the option, if they want to keep their fax line, we can move it, and if they don't deem that necessary, then we'll just cancel that, cancel that service altogether.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
And Kyle, did you say that Orion has, there's been some glitches over at the Justice Center with the move over, or with their old system?
With their, with their Windstream faxing, they've had some problems.
Okay.
So, moving them to Orion, hopefully, will alleviate those-
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval of the 36-month service agreement from Orion?
I'll make the motion to approve the 36-month agreement from Orion.
For $25,000?
For $25,000.
No. $25 a month.
Or for $25 a month.
Okay.
Gee, thanks for catching that clarification.
Yeah, wow. That's an expensive fax machine.
It is.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the service agreement. Any further discussion?
No.
Not Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we have Joby Brogdon.
Good morning.
Hey, Joby.
Good morning. Had a request, started with the Clerk of Court's Office, to add them, you know, currently non-county employees. Well, all county employees have access ID badges with their picture on them, and then all non-county employees that utilize our buildings have a FOB, and the Clerk of Courts has requested to go, move to a photo ID badge, primarily when they have trials at the Justice Center. Depending on the type of trial, sometimes they do front-entry security, which requires searching of people entering the facility. My understanding with talking with Sheriff Fitzgerald, that in the Iowa code, there is a provision that if they're an employee of the facility, if they have proper photo identification, they can bypass that full search as they enter the facility. So, the Clerk of Courts has requested, if they could, if they had photo identification, because all that staff has to come through the front-entry of the building, then they wouldn't have to be fully searched every time they enter and exit the facility, so. And then, with talking with Sheriff Fitzgerald, he's also said that he has approached the judges and then their appropriate staff, and they are also interested in it. And on our current system, we already have photos of everyone who carries a FOB, as well as everybody that carries a photo ID badge, so. And the badges themselves are actually cheaper to produce than purchasing the FOBs. Now, the FOBs can be reused as new employees come and go, or the badges unfortunately cannot. Once they're printed and that person leaves, we have to destroy them, so. There's other things that would come with this. We would probably have to have, like, state employee badges look a little different than county employee badges, and then also, since the code states that they have to be an employee of the facility to bypass the security, then those employees that work at the Justice Center's badge would probably also have to look a little different than, like, let's say, us that work in this building.
So, we'll just say just, it would specifically say Justice Center on it?
Yeah, maybe have, you know, like, different colored stripe, and then, like, state employees would probably look a little different than county employees, and-
And you're saying those, those cards would only work for the Justice Center?
Well, if employees that work at the Justice Center that would also have access at other facilities, they would work there as well. They would just look different, so like, as the employees that work at that facility came through the front door, it would be an easy visual for the people performing the security check to see that, okay, they are an employee of this facility, versus like, you know, "I went in there, and mine was green," and let's say the Justice Center was red, then they would see that mine is green, and I don't actually work at that facility, so then I would have to go through the security check.
Now, my concern is not about the, what the appearance of it is, it's what access these cards would give state employees.
Same access as they currently have. We can assign-
So, it would be just assigned to the Justice Center?
Yeah.
It would be for other county buildings?
Yeah, they would not gain any further access.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my question. I didn't ask it very well. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, that would just be my comment, is I just wanted clarification. Thanks for clarifying that, that it would be just for the Justice Center, just for the areas that they currently have, not access to any other-
Nope. They would not gain any more access than they currently have.
And do the cards, do they, if somebody leaves, you know, employment, do the cards automatically, do you have a mechanism to deactivate them, or do you?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it's part of our, when the requests come in to, you know, employee leaves or terminated, yeah, it's part of, we get in and we can set dates and times of when they get deactivated, and if it's immediate.
And do you already have some, I mean, I'm going to assume you're going to have to have some sort of maybe additional communication, so that you know who's currently there and who's leaving, so that-
Yep, and we already have that with the state employees. They follow the same protocol that county employees do as far as requesting FOBs and deactivating FOBs, and so on.
This was discussed at the last Courthouse Security Meeting, Committee Meeting, and it sounds like a good idea. Also, while I was over a couple of weeks ago, I think, over at the Justice Center, or we can go, when a trial was going on, and I liked being able to go through the line and not have them dig through my suitcase that I lovingly call a purse. And I can see where they're talking about, like, the court reporters who are having to haul a lot of information in, and I just, I don't think that it pairs security at all, because they already have FOBs.
Yep.
This is just going to be for the regular people who are coming into the Justice Center.
Yeah, and like, currently, what, how they're handling it is, they have a physical list of everybody's names, and then the people that are performing the security check, is they, you know, if somebody approaches and says, "Well, I'm an employee here, here's my photo ID," then they scan the list of names, and if the name's on the list, then they can bypass the security check, to where this, it would be, I think, a lot quicker visual.
So, my next question was, what is it, $6 per badge?
Yeah, but roughly, to purchase the badge, print it, put it in a holder, it's about $6. And then it's about-
And we've been-
Go ahead.
No.
I was just going to add, then it's about $8 to physically purchase the FOB, so.
Are we thinking we'll just provide those, or will the court system actually buy the-
It has been, with talking with Shannon, with the Clerk of Courts, it has been offered, they would be willing to purchase the badges if, if need be. I mean, we don't require them to purchase the FOB on initial hire in assigning that FOB to them, so.
So, would you be deactivating the FOB then?
Yep.
So, they would just have the one?
And then taking those back, yep. Because like, law enforcement would still carry the FOBs, so we would still have an inventory of FOBs that we could reuse, and then even, you know, like, Nevada PD has FOBs for some of our facilities, and Huxley PD, and other agencies like that, that are in and out of the Justice Center, so.
How many employees will this be?
Oh, I would say probably around 40, off the top of my head, depending on if, if the judges and their associated staff end up on it, and the Clerk of Courts, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Entertain a motion.
I would move that we authorize facilities management to issue the photo, take care of and issue the photo badges for the Clerk of Court's Office, and for any of the employees related to the judges and court reporters, other staff who regularly work in the building, to be offered this at their cost.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, at the Clerk of Court's cost, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't know how the accounting works for judges versus the Clerk of Court, so I, the there was covering whoever, whatever departments, I guess, through the Department of Justice is paying, so I could clarify that. Not at our cost. That would be the other way to phrase it.
And, and- Can you second the discussion? Yes, yes, I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Joby, I know you said you've had conversations with the Clerk of Court and potentially paying for that. How about the judges or their staff at all?
No, I have not, not about specifically purchasing any addition, you know, like, purchasing the badges themselves.
So, and let me clarify, since we have a second, we're discussing, you did say that we have provided the FOBs in the past at no charge?
Correct.
Okay, do you have money to cover the possibly $240 in your budget?
Yes.
You don't have a problem with doing that?
No.
Okay.
So, we're looking for a friendly amendment?
Yeah, yes.
At our cost.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, to provide a friendly amendment that we incur the cost, or out of your budget of the $240 to provide the, to provide the badges.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the-
We did, we got to vote now.
I'm sorry. Okay, we are voting on the motion as amended, and the motion was originally yours.
It was mine, yeah. Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, we got it.
Thanks, Joby.
Thank you.
You got us all tangled up there.
Okay. Thanks, Joby. Millie Shoneman and Discussion and Resolution 20.43, Two Emma States, a residential parcel subdivision. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey.
This is a residential parcel subdivision of two properties currently owned by, let's call it the Oakenour family. I always say their name. I apologize. It is located south in Nevada, but in north of Maxwell, it's not within two miles of the city, so it's right on the township line of Nevada and Indian Creek Townships. And these are the two subject properties outlined in yellow. So, one is 1.22 net acres, and it contains a dwelling. This is actually the site of the historic farmstead location, and a new dwelling was built at that location. This house and smaller parcel is owned by the applicant.
Can you push your mic away?
Yes. Is it loud?
Yes.
Okay. And one, the other parcel is 32.9 net acres, and it's a mix of row crops and grazing area, and some natural areas around a small creek that drains to East Indian Creek. Another note is that the applicant, who resides in the dwelling, also has a grain trucking business run from the property, who's applied for a home business permit, and the purpose of the subdivision initially was that he'd like to park the vehicles that he uses for the grain trucking business in the barn located on the other property. So, here's the barn right here, so it's not on the property he owns right now, and so we will be able to issue a home business permit once he owns that property. So, that's part of this. The property was originally plotted as an agricultural subdivision in 1999, and has also been divided once through a cloud of survey to create Parcel B here, so if any further divisions require subdivision, which is why we're requesting a residential parcel subdivision today. This is what the proposed division looks like. So, basically, you would have Lot 1, which would be an enlargement of the parcel with the existing dwelling to include the barn and the agricultural structures. You would also have Lot 2, which is a 2.2 core net acre lot, which would be considered buildable for a dwelling. There's no current plans to construct a dwelling on Proposed Lot 2. It's a grazing area right now that the applicant would purchase and own. He has goats and occasionally cows, but in the future, he thought one of his children might like to build a house there. But again, there's no current plans, but just in case. And so, then the remainder is an outlot, and so the remainder would include the agricultural land and the natural areas around that creek. And outlots cannot, we cannot issue a zoning permit for developments on outlots, so that's really protecting this area, and that's the majority of the subdivision, it's 28.45 net acres. You'll also see that Lot 2 doesn't have frontage on 657th Avenue. There is an access easement provided back to Lot 2, which is permitted as part of a residential parcel subdivision. This is the only type of subdivision where we can create a lot that doesn't have frontage. So, that means our- So that meets our requirements. And you'll also see there's a general note that might be hard to read, but Outlet A has an easement sixty feet wide over that creek that drains to East Indian Creek, which is required as part of the subdivision. So in regards to future land use, the property is designated agricultural conservation area, rural residential area, and natural areas. There are principles for these areas that require us to protect agricultural land and natural resources and provide adequate buffers for development from these resources. I think the requirements of a residential parcel subdivision is that you can't do any further residential parcel subdivisions once you go through this process, protect it, protect any from future development. Only the grazing land may be impacted if one of the children were to build a house in the future because the row crops and natural areas are on that outlot. Looking at surrounding ag uses, the applicant's family owns several parcels to the south and west that are in agricultural production. There are also two parcels to the north in agricultural production under different ownership. This parcel is also owned by the applicant's family and has accessory structures used for their ag operation, and then across the street, there's also a couple larger parcels in agricultural production. Of the twenty-two parcels within a quarter mile, there are four, including the subject property with single-family dwellings, but otherwise, there's thirteen that would exceed the thirty-five acre requirement to build the dwelling. So the character of the area is really large agricultural purpose. Here's a few photos. It was snowing, so that's what, the little white flag sign, not the projector. This is the existing dwelling and the garage, and here's an aerial photo, I kind of tried to sketch out approximately what the enlarged parcel would look like in blue. So here's the dwelling, and then the, the new lot would extend back here to include these outbuildings. And then this is looking west on proposed Lot One and Two, and so mainly, it's looking at this grazing area, that would be where a child could build a house in the future. And then this is looking north and south, you can kind of see some of the adjacent agricultural parcels and buildings on six hundred and fifty-seventh from proposed Lot One. Applicable regulations, staff has found that all of these requirements for a residential parcel subdivision are met. And we did route these to, a proposal to county departments and mailed notification letters to surrounding property owners within a quarter mile. Story County engineers noted the need for an access easement, which we have received, and we just had some general questions about the home business as well, and we received no comments from property owners within the adjacent area. So just in summary, planning and development staff recommends approval of the two Emma State's Platte Two subdivision, residential parcel subdivision plaque as proposed, which is alternative one, we found all requirements are met. There's no current plans to construct a dwelling on the additional lot, but there may be in the future. The majority of the subdivision land is in an outlot, including the row crops and natural areas, and there's a sixty-foot wide easement over the creek on that outlot. The new lot for a potential new dwelling has access to the roadway through an access easement. Future land use principles for agricultural conservation areas, rural residential areas, and natural areas are met, as we're only creating one additional development lot may impact grazing area, but not other areas, and all adjacent properties are in agricultural production or contain natural areas. So again, that's alternative one, is recommended, and any questions for staff? The applicant couldn't make it here today.
Doesn't look like we have any questions. So I'd entertain a motion for approval of Resolution twenty dash four three.
I make the motion to approve consideration of Resolution twenty dash four three.
I second.
Okay, further discussion? Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion is approved, thank you. First motion is approved, thank you.
Very good detailed report, as usual.
Thank you. Discussion and consideration of appointment to Board of Adjustment of Wendy Snyder for an unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three, and Kelly Winfrey for a term that would go from January one twenty to twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
I would move approval of the appointments, Wendy Snyder with her term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three, and Kelly Winfrey with the term of January first twenty through twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Appointments remain, thank you. Next, we have a wellness program overview, Noel McClatchy and the Wellness Committee are here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have Leanne Harder and Latifah Faisal here with me to help represent the Wellness Committee today. We just thought it'd be a great time to come to the board and kind of give you a review of what we're currently offering for our employees. You know, our wellness mission is to help county employees make voluntary behavioral changes which reduce the health risk and enhance their individual productivity. We're gonna review?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to review what we're currently offering employees, some of the goals that the Wellness Committee has that we've discussed over the years, and then some potential enhancement opportunities to bring more opportunities for our employees to become the best that they can be as far as whole health. Our current wellness initiatives, we use our wellness articles in the monthly newsletter and the Wellness Wednesday Tips to educate employees on various health topics. We have done blood drives in the past, we offer an annual flu shot clinic, we have about ninety employees participate in that each year. We do have our Healthy Living Day Initiative, so for those employees that participate in the health risk assessments that are done annually and five wellness sessions, they do earn a healthy living day. And we have seen increased participation each year. On the next slide, we do have some data that we have prepared for you. We do the Healthy State Walk Initiative, and then we provide various wellness challenges such as the Step Up Story County, Shape Up Story County, a water challenge, and then the annual charity event each year as well. The Wellness Committee has worked hard to offer employees opportunities focused on various aspects of their health, nutrition, water intake, movement. We continue to offer a variety of challenges throughout the year. However, over the past couple of years, we have also tried to provide challenges for a different audience, and I feel like we just haven't been able to capture that audience. We have done a few different surveys, we've done two in the fall of two thousand fifteen and the fall of two thousand seventeen, and one area or suggestion that is repeated in those surveys is that they're looking for fitness reimbursement options. As you may have noticed in the, on the agenda, I do have a wellness policy that would include that enhancement. It's next on the agenda. As you can see, we have the Healthy Estate Walk, the Step Challenge, Fitness Challenge, and then the Health Screenings, and the Water Challenge. And over the last four years, we have anywhere from, I believe, four years ago, we had an average of eight percent of employees participating in these programs. Now we're anywhere from twenty to forty percent depending on, on the challenge. The Wellness Committee is passionate about offering tools to help employees to be successful in their wellness journey, and the Wellness Committee would like to see us as a leader for other entities and in organizational wellness. Story County would like to be identified as a workplace focused on supporting employees' overall health and well-being by the Healthy Estate Initiative. They offer different awards each year for leaders in this area. You have any questions?
What is this five-two-one-oh Healthy Choices campaign?
Sure, so that is a program provided by the Healthy Estate Initiative. They have different action guides for schools and workplaces, and so when looking through the criteria, we do a great job on, on a lot of their criteria. One area that maybe we could enhance is the movement portion of providing employees incentives to move more.
The five, five is five servings of fruit. The, the numbers actually have some significance as well.
Yes.
Five is, five or more fruits and vegetables daily. The two is two hours or less of screen time. One represents one hour or more of physical activity, and then zero is, zero sugary drinks and really encouraging drinking more water. So that's a daily goal for participants throughout all wellness programming.
I think it'd be tough for us to do two hours or less of screen time for most people here, but I'd be up to looking into muzak in the elevator for me to kind of bounce up and down for that one trip. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I don't, no, sorry, I was just writing down what the five-two-one-oh stood for.
No, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have an idea how much money the county spends on wellness programs for employees right now?
Sure, so our budget currently is eighty-five hundred. The last couple of years, we have spent about six thousand.
Six thousand's your average, your usual expenses, okay. And what is the majority, the majority of that go toward, would you say?
The Shape Up Story County incentives, I would say.
Incentives, okay. Okay. Any other questions then about the presentation before we move on to the proposed policy?
I, I just wanna say I was lucky enough to sit on the committee for two years, okay? Wow, really great ideas, really looking at trying to get all employees involved, and it was a good way to get to know some people too, but I was very impressed with the ideas that came up and the feedback you get, and I know sometimes, sometimes it's like, oh geez, they complained about this, but they like that, but anyway, so the committee does a very good job, I think, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
For the opportunity.
Okay, if there are no other questions, let's go on to item seven, which is discussion and consideration of the wellness policy proposed.
Okay, we do have this wellness policy out for seven-day review. The only change would be the fitness reimbursement. As I had mentioned previously, that was something that repeatedly comes up, and so this year, when we were kind of strategically planning for FY twenty-one, we decided to take it a step further and do some research and see what other entities are providing for their employees. This model is very similar to what Lynn County provides for their employees. It would be a maximum of twenty dollars per month for a single fitness or gym membership for the employee. When, when doing some research, there were a lot of cities that participate in this, and it varied from ten to about twenty-five dollars per month as far as the reimbursement. We did look at the best way to approach this, and we worked closely with Lisa Markley. It is a taxable fringe benefit, so it would come out of each individual department or office budget. It's really hard to guess how many people would participate, if the board would support this, and we thought if we brought it to you prior to budget sessions, that was something that we could work with individual departments and offices and kind of provide a more accurate number. We are thinking possibly twenty percent, which would be about twelve thousand per year.
Well, at maximum risk, at maximum risk here, would be that all two hundred and fifty employees joined a gym, right?
Right, right.
And it'd be, so it'd be sixty thousand a year, maximum. But so I find that interesting, that twenty percent, I think that may be low, but good low. I mean, you know, I mean, that we could move that up?
Sure.
And do more, so I think twenty dollars is reasonable for reimbursement, okay, for a, a membership. And this would start as soon as they've been through, what, their six-month probation period, or how would that work?
Yes, or actually, it would start immediately. The effective date for this policy change would be July one of twenty twenty.
Okay, and for everybody regardless of whether they'd work for us one, one year or twenty years?
Right.
Or one month, you mean?
Right, okay, all right, but, okay, yeah.
I don't have a question. I, I do appreciate that you're listening to the employees and getting their input on what they think they'd want to help be healthier, give them a little bit more motivation to be moving and stuff, so thanks for bringing it forward.
I'm kind of mixed about the timing of doing this right now. I understand the positive you're saying because it's a taxable benefit, if the board were to approve it now, that would mean it could be folded in the departments in the budget. The other part of that is we haven't seen budget requests yet, and we don't know what our budget requests are gonna be, so it's hard to prioritize, and in my mind, that's why I asked how much we're spending right now in wellness, because if it were twenty percent of the employees, that would be a tripling of our wellness budget, so to speak. I know it would be in the departments, it would be scattered through it, but at the same time, it's tripling the amount of taxpayer monies that we would be appropriating for wellness benefits. So I'm, I'm wondering if we were to wait and think about this in terms of our budgeting for next year, if that would make it difficult to go back and change it and put it in department budgets after we had made budget decisions. Lisa, do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
You don't?
Yeah, neither do I.
What Nicole said was that we were bringing, excuse me, you were bringing it now, because that would give guidance for all of the department heads to put it in their budgets, and because it's a taxable benefit, it has to be included in their budgets. So that would not happen unless we approve this today. You gotta do it, okay. You're not, you're not.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lisa.
So, the salary-related line items of the budgets are, are not something that the individual departments, with the exception of, you know, overtime and, and the taxable fringe when it comes to cell phones right now, which we're paying almost five thousand dollars a month in reimbursements on those. All those items are put in, they're not, they're guesstimated at the beginning of the budget, because we don't know. I think that, that one of the things that we had many discussions on in talking about this was can we budget this in countywide and pay for it out of there? It's a payroll-related item, so, so that is not an option. And if it's secondary roads, it comes from a different fund. If it's rural, it comes from a different fund. If it's mental health, it comes from a different fund. So while I am, I think the cleanest way, if we want to start July first, is to say So while I am, I think the cleanest way, if we want to start July 1, is to say, everybody's going to guesstimate how many employees in their departments are going to do it, we're going to put a figure in there, but we'll budget in countywide an amount of money that we actually will amend into those budgets as the year progresses. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Now, what that doesn't do is address if it's different funding, I mean, we're going to budget in the general fund, and then we're going to distribute it to the different departments, basically, is how we're going to handle that, if that's the case. Because we don't know. We don't know if that twenty percent of people is all going to be out of the sheriff's office, or that twenty percent of people is all going to be out of secondary road. We don't know. We don't know where the dollars are going to land.
My issue is having to make this decision in advance of seeing any budget requests. And what I'm trying to figure out is, is there a way we can look at this, and maybe the other supervisors don't agree, but I just wanted to put it on the table, is there any way we can look at this as we're looking at budget requests, rather than making right now, before we even get into the budget, into the budget deliberations, making a potentially twelve thousand dollar or more decision?
So if I can restate a little bit, just so I'm understanding.
Please do.
All right. What you'd like to do is not put this out for review and consideration now. You'd like to wait until we actually have seen the numbers and we're sitting at our Board of Supervisors, because we're talking about it being countywide, at least beginning-wise. So when we have our lengthy budget discussion workshop, okay, that's when we would take a look at whether we feel there's sixty thousand. I'm going to go with the max here. We should be so lucky that everybody's healthy, right? And then we say, okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll put it in the budget then. And then, if we've built it into the budget, you're saying it can always come back for the seven-day review and the approval at that time? So you're talking about not doing anything now, but doing something possibly at the end of January?
I don't want, my personal feeling is I don't want to make a budget decision now. And that's what I see we're being asked to do, is to make a budget decision.
It would be difficult to pass it now and then not build it into our budget at it, okay? Or not add it in January. But from Lynn, from your perspective, Lisa, if it's passed now, and you take that estimated twenty or thirty percent, whatever it is, then you can put that right into the numbers that you're going to generate for us immediately, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So having been through more budgets, okay, I'm all right with, from Lisa's standpoint, putting it in the budget now, because we always can take it out. Linda, you sat through budget last year, and you know how our pencils are going, and we're crossing things out and adding things. But the question then would be if we don't leave it in, then we are saying to the employees, sorry, we've decided not to fund it after all, correct? I mean, that's what your feeling is?
I guess my clarifying question then would be, if you have a policy that says the county will reimburse?
Right.
Then you're setting yourself up to saying...
We backed out?
We're, no, to me, is that you are going to provide reimbursement. It doesn't say we may, it's going to say we will.
Period of conversation. And what I was going to say was, this isn't an annual decision, I don't think. The policy is going to state that you will do this, and it's going to be ongoing. So starting whatever date you decide to start, this is the way it's going to be. So to your point, it would be very hard to say we're not going to, we're not going to make a decision until we see the budget numbers every year, because if it's there, it's there. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, but at the same time, we're going to be presented with that, and we don't know we're going to be presented with other asks as well.
Right.
And by providing, by, my sense is that by approving this policy today and sending it out for a seven-day review, what we're doing is we're committing. And we would have to change, if we decided later on in the budget sessions, that, hey, we thought this was a good idea back in December, and we wanted to support this, but something comes in, then we're saying, oh my gosh, this is a higher priority. Not only do we have to take the money out of the budget then, we also have to reverse ourselves on the policy.
Could I shift the conversation a little bit here and talk about twenty dollars a month investment per employee? Well, I hear what you're saying. Yes, I know, I'm running still, I'm keeping that spreadsheet there. I'm just shocked about what I've got added in, about what people want next year. But this is twenty cents per, twenty dollars per month per employee, and as I say, the, I'm going to say, the worst we would be at it is if, at sixty thousand per year. And given how large our payroll is, this is a very, very small amount to offer a benefit to the employees. There might be a time when budget in the future is so bad that we would have to cut the benefit. If that were happening, we would be cutting other things too. I don't, I'm not as worried about committing to the employees and starting this as a program, because I think it is a benefit that is, makes us competitive out there. And I believe also it's a benefit that's good for the employees, and if they're actually taking advantage of it, it's a benefit, because we have healthier people working at the county. So...
I think my, one area where my kind of hangup is, is the will, the word will in the policy versus a may. Because to me, it says if you pass that, kind of sounds like whether you have the money or not, the county will reimburse you for, you know, unless you develop a different type of policy versus if you say...
Right, we'd have to bring a policy back.
Yeah, unless you bring a policy back to say, you know, no, we will not do that. I'm a little torn on it, because I think the idea is a great idea, and we do want to promote health and wellness within our state. But I also look at all the asks that have come as well. But I do think, okay, cost-wise, this might be an incentive for folks and keep them healthy. And I know when I exercise early in the morning, I feel a lot more focused and energetic, and I would just probably say in a happier mood when I come into the office and stuff. So there's certainly, there are definite health benefits, both mental health and, mental health and physical health, when folks are exercising.
I'm going to make the motion, and either it will die or not, okay? But I move that we look at this new wellness policy, and we put it out for seven-day review with the intention of then, after receiving the comments and feedbacks, coming back then and then voting whether we want to approve it or not. This would allow the employees to weigh in one more time.
I will second, but I've got a question for you. So I'll second the motion, just so we can continue with the discussion here, is, again, I'm kind of hung up on the word will. And I don't know if we would want to suggest a may there, or if that would be part of the seven-day review for them to look at. And I think part of that, for me, then is, then it allows us to look at budgetary lies, where are we at if we say we may do it versus we will do it.
So would we look at may, may when economically feasible?
I'm not sure. Let's, let's...
I just want to make a couple of comments.
Yep.
Budgeting-wise, the policy was brought just to have a discussion at the budget table, the timing of it. We couldn't have that discussion during budget time if we hadn't brought the policy to the board to have a discussion, to see if the board was even interested in this. You can change it to may. My concern is that we'll have different departments and offices offering it differently, and we do need it to be consistent across the county. I do have some language in some bargaining contracts that say that we will offer the same wellness benefit to all, to the union employees as we do non-union. So, so by taking, changing that language, you know...
Good point, yeah, good point.
It causes me to be a little hesitant on that, so...
So Alyssa, just on your comment, so by bringing this policy forward, what you're saying is then just helps with the discussion, it is not doing any requirement?
What you can do is, is you can, you can put this out for seven-day review and approve it, and then you are kind of making a funding, you know? Or you could give direction to come back during budget work sessions, after we know where the numbers are at. I don't see how we could have had a, had a robust discussion during budget work sessions without bringing this to the board prior to those work sessions starting. We have to do everything in an open meeting. If the board was not interested in it all, then we wouldn't have those discussions during, during the work sessions or put any, I don't know how you would put figures in the budget without having the discussion prior to putting those budgets together.
So I'm not sharing that with you, just to go that way.
Sure.
Because we have done that before. We've said, oh, we want to put so much in, and we'll develop a program later, or we want to do this. But, but it's a, it's a small point, okay? So I just want to, no, we have done that over the past...
A countywide program for different things that would cover all different offices and departments?
It's been programming externally.
That the board has done.
Yeah, the board has done. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Just for clarification, what you're saying, so if this were approved, we could give direction to say, bring back the review at a different date versus doing just a seven-day review?
You could, you could do it anyway. You could say, you could say, instead of sending it out for, or you could send it out for comments, and then put in there that the fitness reimbursement will be discussed during budget work sessions, as to whether the county can, can fund that portion of the policy, if the board's not comfortable making that decision at this point, or next week, when, when the, when the policy would actually come back and do that.
And the motion we have on the floor, as I wrote it down, was that we look at it and put out for seven-day review.
Yep, there's no...
That doesn't say we approve, and you're not, your intent was not to approve the policy?
No, my intent was not to approve it, it was to get employee feedback, which I think would be very beneficial.
Policies aren't approved on the first time, it's not approved until it comes back. So there's no, you know, it's just being, this is a policy being considered or gathering comments.
But that wouldn't mean that it would come back for seven-day review?
For next week.
At next meeting for approving that?
Next Tuesday.
To approve the policy?
That, that could be the consideration, or the board could take different action at that point.
We could, yeah, postpone it.
And you can put different parameters on a policy like this. You could make the policies approved, and the fitness reimbursement is approved, dependent on budgeting, since if you're uncomfortable with that portion of the policy. The rest of the policy is currently enforced, there's nothing else.
No.
The only addition would be that fitness.
Yeah. And as I said earlier, my concern is, you know, I, I think it's a good thing. I'm not, you know, at all opposed to it, except for the fact that it is a budget item, and if it's twelve, if it's twenty percent of employees, it's twelve thousand seven hundred, it could be more than that, we don't know, and we won't know during the budget time. In fact, we won't know how many it is until, until people start signing up. So we would be going into some unknown, and we need to realize that. And again, the fact that we just don't know whatever, what else is coming up, you know? I don't mind sending it out for a seven-day review, I just don't think the board should be making a commitment, you know, because if it's sixty thousand dollars, which I don't think it'll be, but you can say that's not a lot of money, but that's, that's a position.
And I don't mean to be flippant with taxpayer money.
It's a position.
Yeah, it's a position. But it's...
So, so, yeah, and, and I just think it's too, to make the, to make the decision before going into even seeing what we have as budget requests, I'm not comfortable with.
So just so I'm clear, what we would be potentially voting on is just for it to go out for that seven-day review, that it would come back at the next meeting, and we could give other direction, either, as said, we could postpone it, or we could give further direction of saying, well, we approve it, but it is dependent on the budgetary, where we are budgetary-wise, is that, is that...
You can do that. I would recommend, when the policy goes out for seven-day comment, or we get comments back, that there is some language put in there that, you know, we haven't gone through the budgeting process, you know, we're taking comments now, but the ultimate decision may be made after, after the budget work sessions, and where the board knows where, how everything looks. I don't, I, I don't want to give employees the hope that it's going to get approved. I think you need to give them full notice that...
Sure.
You know, we're going through this process. We need to take a look at the budget to see if the budget can handle the reimbursements.
So typically, when we send something out for seven-day review, okay, the comments that we get back really are related to how a department operates, or wording, editing, et cetera. In this particular case, then, I feel my motion is also asking for employees to weigh in on whether they feel they would use it, or whether it's a good benefit. Is everybody on the same mind there, that this would be a little bit different than your normal seven-day review?
You could handle that two different ways. You can do a seven-day review with the policy, or you can give direction to go back and see the interest, since the last time that the surveys were done were in 2017. It's been a few years.
Well, and I think too, when you're looking at, because this is a policy on all the things that you already currently do, with the exception of the fitness reimbursement. So I think you'd have to make sure that, if we're wanting additional information, would you want, on the entire policy, or direct it just to that fitness reimbursement?
Well, as long as we're putting the policy out, if there are other ideas, or suggestions, or comments, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have everybody have the same opportunity to weigh in on everything, but we would want to make it clear about the money, once again, that the reimbursement is where our, where we want to make sure we get weigh in, buy, you know, comment on.
So would we potentially, what I, I'm just trying to think of a potential amendment to your motion, of putting it out for the seven-day review, garnering input from employees, asking them to focus on, particularly on the fitness reimbursement, to find out if they would potentially use that or not, and that final consideration for that area would be determined during the budgeting sessions.
Now, I'm going to go back to what Lisa Markley said here, because yes, that's what we could say on, with that, but she is right, if we, and Alyssa, if we offer it as a benefit, we offer it as a benefit. And we could have all employees take it, we won't know. And, you know, so when we go into budget there, that's why I keep on saying sixty thousand, and then we'd have a better idea if it was going to be twenty or thirty thousand, but there's still, we're going to be budgeting somewhere around the risk of that. Lisa's good, really good, so maybe she can do some actuarial, you know, discussion or consultation with Alyssa about use there to...
It's the same as we budget for insurance premiums.
Yeah.
We don't know who's going to take it year to year. The first year is, is, it's an art of how you budget. That's the best way I can put it.
I am really good at that.
Yeah, apparently, we've come pretty close. Again, there's, you don't know how many. You can budget the full amount in your countywide budget. I, I don't know how Lynn County puts a large amount of funds towards their wellness outside their fitness program. So they have contracts, and they spend a large amount on employee wellness. This is not close, I mean, in regards to what, what they spend, this would be small, small. They have a contract with a, with an actual provider that comes in and does different wellness things with their employees. So it would be a benefit, I would say. It would be offered the same as health insurance or anything else. Employees can take it.
I'd like to point, I'd like to point out also about coming back to a benefit to the county. We are on track, although this board can change that, but we're on track to become totally self-insured. And, you know, we already have been hit by high insurance premiums increases that we didn't expect for the last couple of years. And so when I say that offering a twenty dollar per month, if it would get some more people to the gym and get them healthier, that benefits us as long as they are working for us and our insurance. And so sometimes, so I'm going to throw out a cliche, pennywise, pound foolish sometimes. So it's a thought of consideration, though, that the amount of money we may be... So it's a thought of consideration, though, that the amount of money we may be talking about here compared to when we gasp if we get another 30% at first quote like we've gotten for the last two years. Having been through that, I can tell you that's eye-opening.
So were you making an amendment?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting amendment to the motion?
I was making, yes.
Was, right?
I have to think back to my discussions on there.
Okay. I think what I heard was that we were asking specifically about the revision and that a final decision would be made during the budget process so that employees understood that.
So that the policy would come back?
The policy will come back after the budget process.
After budget work sessions, but you're gathering... So it's not really a seven-day review because it's going to be more like a four-month review? And I mean, you can just say, this was brought to the board. We want to get feedback from employees prior to budget work sessions. And then based on those budget work sessions, the policy may be brought back to the Board of Supervisors for consideration.
I think that accurately describes it. Would that be your amendment?
Yes.
I'll accept that friendly amendment. Okay. Shelly's going, eh! Got it. Okay. Then we have an amended motion in front of us. Is there any further discussion?
None.
And, Laura, I believe it was your motion and... Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then, we now go to LeAnn Harder for discussion and consideration of administrative procedures for floodplain management.
Don't forget us. Leadership Nevada.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. I was putting my notes on the wrong agenda item.
That's all right.
Leadership Nevada. Okay. Alyssa and Sandra King.
Sure.
Good morning.
First time there.
Good morning. So it was a few weeks ago, I believe, that the board approved two scholarships for employees to attend Leadership Nevada. We did send the information out to departments and offices. We received four applications. Sandra, LeAnn, and I met late last week and reviewed those applications. All four were great candidates. Leadership Nevada would give all four different things that they could bring back to their positions within the county. We did have to make a recommendation of two, and so you will see that we are recommending Rhonda Sykes and Latifah Fossil for the two scholarships. Do you have any questions or comments for us?
No, I think it's great that you had four people that were interested in the position, especially when we had such a short turnaround.
It was a short turnaround. So I think possibly Erin's comments that the department had elected official about how it impacted her and what she got from the program a couple of years ago really helped get some applicants for this.
Anything else to add, Sandra?
Nothing else to add. There were four strong candidates. You know, any of them could have represented the county well.
That's great to hear. Great.
Well, I'll make the motion that the Leadership Nevada scholarships go to Latifah Fossil and Rhonda Sykes.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Enjoy your two days.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for applying, both of you. Now, we will go to administrative procedures for floodplain management regulation. LeAnn. Good morning.
Been to a few meetings where we haven't been there.
I actually was not even cognizant of what time it was at all. This is the final piece of the transition of the floodplain management regulations. Yes. Thank you. Exactly. There are one proposed change, and then I did note a correction to what's on the agenda. It's under Section 3.0, and this is just striking letter L that the floodplain manager serves as the CRS Community Rating System Coordinator. I will come back to the board next week with a resolution naming my position as that, maintaining that responsibility. And then on page seven, I failed to change the effective date. So the effective date would be January 1st, 2020. Are there any questions?
Lynn?
No, it looks good.
Okay. And to entertain a motion and for the approval of the administrative procedures for floodplain management, effective 1120 with the changes that LeAnn just noted.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
She's just on her way back already knowing what was going to happen there.
Okay. Next, we have, let's see, item nine was pulled. So we're on item 10. Discussion and consideration request for store county board supervisor's opinion about a proposal to change the name of Squaw Creek flowing through Ames, Story County, Boone County, and Hamilton County. We talked about this last week, and we knew that the Ames City Council was meeting. I attended the city council meeting at Mayor Haley's request, and they did, the Ames City Council did approve recommending to the Board of Geographic Names to change the name. Did not come up with any alternative names, but asked that Mayor Haley worked with us and the other entities to come up with a possible name. I've spoken with Mayor Haley since, and he's thinking maybe we should just do a list of names that we think might be, that have been recommended to us, we think might be good names, could prioritize that list. I think that we're going to meet, talk with some other counties, and I don't know if we've heard back from either Hamilton or Boone County. I think Hamilton's meeting on the 10th, and Boone, I heard after Thanksgiving, so that might be tomorrow.
Yep. I've reached out to both Hamilton and Boone County, have not... Boone County, they were, yes, we'd like to meet. We just have not been able to coordinate a date to meet and discuss. Hamilton County as well. Actually, I think Hamilton County was going to have a discussion on the 10th of December, which would be next week and stuff. So I was continuing, trying to reach out, but you had the holiday last week, so it just made it, people's schedules were a little bit harder to connect with.
And I've not heard back from Franklin Township either. So I have been keeping kind of a running list because I did send an email out to about 60 contacts of tribal historic preservation officers, or THPOs as they are called, in the Midwest. Got a lot of information back from them, which I can summarize later, but if anybody else has any other information that they would like to add or contacts.
So as I thought about this, I thought about my experience living up in Southeast Alaska and being familiar with some of the tribes up there. I thought, I got to thinking more about what word besides woman might apply without it being a specifically named person. And some tribes, Native American tribes or clan tribes, et cetera, and they use the term mother as an honorific. So a respected woman in the community, usually an elder woman, but would be called mother. And part of that reason is, is because when I looked up the word for woman in Musqueke, and then I did call and I spoke with the Musqueke Tribe Preservation Director this morning, okay? It's a three-syllable word called Inkaway. We, Inkaway. It's hard for me to say it, okay? So I'm thinking it's going to be hard for the adaptation. So then, when I looked up what for mother, one thing I found online, and I did confirm that with the tribe this morning, is there's a two-syllable word meaning my mother, which is nequa, which is a lot easier to say and a lot easier to come off the tongue. There is also, that's a formal one, nequa. There is also the term for mom, like, hey, Mom, come look what I did today. And that term is anee. It's spelled A-N-E-E, but the double Es are pronounced like an eh, okay? But once again, it's a two-syllable word, pretty easy to absorb. So I did talk to him, I spoke to, his name was Jonathan Buffalo, and his wife Suzanne had already responded to us. She was actually the person who responded to your email from Musqueke. So I emphasized with him again that this was the beginning of a process and that there be other counties to consult, et cetera, and also that we would be happy to look at honoring a historical, a female historical figure from the tribes that would have been here after they had relocated here. So that's where I am on it, is I just wanted to find a couple of words that I felt that not only were accurate, but would be easy to assimilate for the change. And that's what I came up with, nequa or anee. Inkaway is going to be tough for people to pick up, so.
Yeah. So I was doing some research, looking at the Iowae tribe and looking at their dictionary, and there's a pretty extensive dictionary. And so they did have the, in various, whether noun or pronoun, however you lose it, the, what was brought to us before, the Hanage. Is that how you pronounce it? Hanage was one. They also have, in, I guess in their language was, I believe it's pronounced Bakoj, which means Iowae. And it actually, it means gray snow. And it came from during the winter times, the snow looked gray when the tribe, when they would have their fires and stuff and some of the silt and stuff from the fire and smoke that came out. So those are just two names that I came up with that were specific to the Iowae tribe. I did find a contact name. I believe he's down in Oklahoma, but I didn't have time to, he didn't have a phone number, I have just an email for the individual, and just thought I would reach out to him as well to find out if he had any other information or suggestions and to be clear on the pronunciation.
Is that Lynn Foster?
No, I believe it was like a Jim Good... Good, not, I want to say Jim Goodman, but that's not.
There was a good something.
Good something. I'm not sure if it's Goodman, but it's good something. Yeah. So, yeah.
And I did send to the other supervisors a summary of like 30-some comments that I got back and also sent them to the Ames City Council. I'm just going to try to summarize them. What I did get back from the tribal historic preservation officers was, I think, uniform consensus about the Story Creek, not thinking that that was something that they thought was appropriate in terms of honoring the people who were here. Somebody suggested naming it after former Chief Justice Katie, who had just recently died with the Bureau of Geographic Names, says someone must be deceased at least five I think most of what I saw, what I got, was that a name that would honor a nation that lived here or was associated with the creek. I've gotten Musqueke, Iowae, and the Sauk, which is a Sac and Sauk tribes, not even knowing if I can pronounce that correctly, as options. Also heard from Sebastian Brown, who is a professor over at Iowa State, and he is the Director of American Indian Studies here. He had suggested Sauk. He also said Iowae he thought would be appropriate. And the Iowae was the first tribe, the first, as we know, tribes now after prehistoric people who, oh, there was another name, the Oniota were the prehistoric people who lived here. The Iowae evidently were descendants of them, and then the Fox and Sauk came in. So those, I think the general idea of a nation that lived here or was associated with the creek is the one I saw most predominant in the answers, or the responses that I got. I think we need to find something, if we're going to recommend, that's easy to spell or pronounce. I think we can do some education about why there would be a renaming if the board decides to rename, but I think it could be a real leap if it's something that, you know, people look at in a map and have no idea how to pronounce. I think that's almost a disservice. So those are kind of my thoughts right now. Personally, I think Iowae might be the name that, you know, is the original tribe that was here. I think a lot of people have heard that name, so maybe it has, you know, it would not be totally, what's that? I don't know how to pronounce that if it's spelled that way. But I don't know. What's the, what are your thoughts?
You know, I've appreciated the input that we've received on this. Majority have been very positive. I've had a few people who have contacted me who said they prefer it not to be changed, but certainly that is the minority of folks who have contacted me. Overwhelmingly so, folks who want it changed do not want Story Creek. That came through very, very clear. I was hoping that through some of the tribal responses, that they would have gained some suggested names. They were all, yes, we want you to change it. We don't want Story Creek. I was hoping for something more on that and maybe just, maybe we need to ask them a little bit more or provide them with some suggestions and to get their input back as well. It was just kind of my initial thought on that. It'd be nice if we had some feedback from the other counties and their, you know, if they were in support as well. I know that doesn't have to be, if we would pass something and the US Geological of naming can make that determination, but I also know that they've said it's helpful for them if there is consensus amongst the other counties or other areas affected as well.
When I talked to Mr. Buffalo this morning, I did end the conversation in part by inviting him or his wife or others who were in their tribal preservation department, office, that if they thought of a name or if they thought of other ideas, because when I called him, I was looking to confirm about mother being an honorific. I mean, that's how the conversation started, and then we talked about woman, et cetera. And I didn't, you know, I did invite him that please weigh in. This was a long process. He laughed. Apparently, he's heard about this before in other states about how long this gets to be and how many people will want to weigh in. So I like the idea now shifting to Supervisor Merkin's idea about, well, at least let's get a list started of maybe if we can pick a few that we like at this point, and then that allows the other government, local, if you will, governmental entities to weigh in. If I understand it, then after each of us of the counties and Gilbert Township and Ames has weighed in...
Franklin.
Franklin, sorry. Franklin Township. Then I guess there'll be a state, then they'll ask the state also. So the state's going to get an opportunity to weigh in before the board, and I'll have to go back and look where I found that. Okay. So anyway, and maybe it was in one of the emails. So, but back to, I like the idea of us forming at least a beginning, you know, four or five names, given that. So my next question would be if we went ahead and did these four or five names, we still would need to get some research done to make sure they're not used anywhere else in Iowa. So Iowae, is my thought, I see right off the bat, everybody would understand, why at the end of it, Iowae? We know how to say that, okay? And so in honoring the tribe, but is it used somewhere else?
Iowae is not used that I could find any place. Sac, Sauk is not, but Sac is.
But Sac is, yeah.
So that's pretty close. Musqueke, obviously, the settlement. So those are the place names that I had. We, and so those are really the only ones I have at this point in terms of place names that I've checked.
Yeah, and I just have the two.
Tribe names.
Yeah. The one that was presented before, and then, as I said, the Bakoj, or how you pronounce it, Bakoj, Bakoj, I believe is how it's pronounced, meaning of Iowae. And it is Mr. Jim Goodtrax is his name, who I wanted to reach out to. Stephen just didn't, just recently found his contact information.
And I guess of the ones I just mentioned, nequa, is because of the E's of saying, and it's the honorific of my mother, okay? I... and it's the honorific of my mother, okay, I like, he, I like the Anah, but mom, the more informal, Anah. People would most likely call it Ani, it's a double E at the end, and we know how we normally.
So how does Nekwa spelled?
Like it sounds, N-E-K-W-A.
Okay.
It's just flat out that way. So that would be, I guess if one to put on the list from that one would be Nekwa, I would think, Nekwa.
So do we, are we starting a list here?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, I think we still are taking the initiative, and I think the other two counties in part will want us, you know, if they can see a list, that will help them, I think.
So I guess I would put forth at least the Bakojie and the Hinage, since those were the two that were, the other one that was brought forth to us last week would be the two that I would put forth at this particular time.
And Hinage is H-I-N-A-G-E, but Dr. Brown actually says I-N-A-G-E.
H-I, or H-I-N?
There's no H according, well, here's what he says.
Well, and that would be one thing, if I can reach this Jim Goodtrax, is to make sure, because I was looking at their dictionary on there, that he has a website of, of some of this information, but making sure the spelling is correct.
And that's what I did, well.
Right.
Yep, Mr. Buffalo was on the phone. He went down the hall to the linguistics person, so.
Okay, and how did you spell the, the Iowee?
It's B-A-X-O-J-E. And I believe it's pronounced Bakojie.
Okay. Okay, so we have basically, have six right now. Musquekee, Iowee, Sauk, Hinage, Bakojie, and Nekwa.
So those are all the native names. And then the other possibility would be we go with Woman's Creek. W-O-M-A-N-S, apostrophe S, Woman's Creek. I mean, that is just an English translation with taking all the derogatory out of it.
Yeah, I think I had one, one person in Hamilton County suggest that. So, so how do we make a decision then? Get more information, have this discussion again?
I would like to, I'd like to have one more discussion.
I would too. But, you know, so we can get more feedback, but at least we've got a list to start to look up, to make sure we've not got a conflict somewhere and pass on to other counties saying this is where our research has taken us so far.
Okay, so the goal would be to make a decision next Tuesday? Or, this is, this is the second time we've had it on the agenda.
Right.
So I'm just saying, we've got a lot of information, we're going to get a little more, do we think we'll have enough information to move it forward next Tuesday?
I think you could put it on the agenda, and if we don't have all of it back, we could pull it from the agenda and move it to the next one, or?
Well, Linda leaves, so, yeah, so we're going to have shorter agendas.
That's right.
Okay, so we move it until after the first of the year. So if we can, I mean, yeah, go ahead, and see, I feel good that in talking to Mr. Buffalo, I was talking to their director, you know, at least, and if we can get some more feedback, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's any big hurry. I just get, want to get a sense of, you know, what our process is, so we know that it's, you know.
I want to keep it moving.
Exactly.
That's what I do, but this is a big undertaking, and a big, it's a big change, and I want to make sure that we are being very thoughtful and doing our due diligence in the process.
Absolutely.
And we may not know what Hamilton County's, or Hamilton County is.
We may not, yeah. They might come up with something entirely different.
Okay, anything else then?
No, thanks.
So you put it on the agenda just again for next week. Thank you for all the information. This is a good process. Okay, where are we? Item 11 then, discussion and consideration of appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Gina McAndrews for the term of January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second, is there discussion?
There is. I want to just make note on the record that I did reach out to our attorney's office. I had a concern about a possible conflict of interest, given that she's a real estate agent, and that planning and zoning deals a lot with subdividing property. So got an email back from Ethan Anderson, and then he attached a copy actually of an Attorney General's opinion from like 1979. So this is not the first time this has come up for planning and development, planning and zoning. And the real point of this is that it's a case-by-case basis about whether there's a conflict. The fact that someone is a real estate agent and may end up selling a property that six years before they were a vote on a, on a subdivide is not a conflict. I mean, there's no anticipated risk there. Someone who comes forward bringing in or advocating at the P&amp;Z table very heavily for some kind of subdivision that creates a lot of housing, and then ends up immediately benefiting from the sales of that, that's a conflict. And so it's very case-by-case. And so after I received those assurances, he also just said, let's be sure to remind Ms. McAndrews that she needs to be very careful to recuse herself when appropriate, when she feels it's appropriate. So there's my.
In fact, that was one of my interview questions of her, and she said, yes, she understood that she wouldn't be there for personal benefit, and if she had a client or she was involved in a project that came in front of planning and zoning, she would very definitely recuse herself. So I didn't have any problem with that. And I think that, quite frankly, that her, her background will be of advantage to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I was impressed. I would agree. I would agree.
So, okay, we have a motion, any further discussion? Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Moving on then, we have department reports. Joby?
Morning again.
It's still good morning.
Yeah, it is. We're still there. Okay, quarterly report time. All right, you've got my usual basic quarterly report. Is there anything specific on that? You, you got questions on? I got a couple of bigger things that I got some information on after I put in this that I'd like to talk about. I figured we'd start with the actual report I submitted, if there's any questions, further details on any of them items. If not, I would move on.
Looks like move on.
All right.
I just did want to kind of make, just kind of make note here that we had an increase in the number of work orders from a year ago for like animal control, and I assume that's because of what you're still doing out there, the final.
Yep, little things here or there, you know, shoring up some loose ends, but yeah. I mean, as a whole, yeah, the work orders are about on par with what they are each quarter, but yeah, animal control was, was obviously significant. You know, we didn't have any last quarter, but a lot of that was, you know, after the remodel, and then things come up that we see, so then we've been out there poking around.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, I'm done now.
Okay. All right, well, one of the items that was on there is we do have a new custodian, and he's starting this afternoon, so full staff again.
Wow, wonderful.
That'll be nice. We've been short-staffed for about two months, so. All right, we're, rental agreement, West Ames Shed, emergency management's going to lease that from us, that is in the works, so. Keith has got the draft of that, and I believe he's going to take it to his commission to review and then get back to Ethan, and then hopefully we can get that agreement hashed out and signed shortly, and then start collecting some rent dollars for the facility. That's a good thing to have. Large animals building for animal control, the conditional use permit is in the process. Sue and I are both working on getting some after the conceptual review, there were some questions we had to answer, and that should be back in front of planning and development here shortly, so. Another thing with the animal shelter is the soil sample for the communications tower that we've been trying to put up there for a while. I believe the soil sample has come back. I do not believe that planning and development has the official, last I heard, which I talked to Marcus last week. They got the, soil looks good, but they need to actually submit the, Calhoun Communications needs to submit the actual report to Planning and Development, and then it should move forward. And then the HVAC project at the Justice Center. That's, this afternoon we're meeting, I think we've come up with some three feasible options to meet. We ran into some issues with basically four pieces, thirteen pieces of equipment we're replacing this phase. Four of those we discovered were undersized, and to get them just to meet the newest code requirements for air exchange rate, they were going to have to get pretty big in size if we were going to incorporate, because we want to, we don't want to make the building less efficient when it comes to energy usage. So those areas, those four units service the jail cells that have toilets in the cells, so they have a very high air exchange rate. Well, you want to recover that air so that you're not, you got to bring in roughly about forty percent outdoor air into those areas, so you have fresh air, and, you know, prevent airborne diseases and all that nasty stuff. But if you just bring straight outdoor air in without pretreating it, or try to use the interior temperature space to, to help pretreat that, efficiency goes way down, and then you'd, you'd spend more month-to-month in utility costs than, I wouldn't even want to try to run that number. But you also reduce the life expectancy of the piece of equipment by about fifteen years. When you look at twenty-five to thirty-year life expectancy on that, on a commercial piece of HVAC equipment, and then you knock fifteen years right off the top by bringing that much outdoor air in, then another cost, then you got to replace it sooner, and so on and so forth. So when we looked at incorporating the energy recovery into the unit itself, it increased the physical size of the unit, which then increased the physical weight of it, and then we ran into the roof structure not being able to support that additional weight. So we've found some, like add-on units that you can add on to the, a standard rooftop unit, or one large unit that services all four of those units that is mounted on the ground, and then make an enclosure and duct it up to the roof. So those are a couple of the options I know of right now, but we're meeting with the engineer, I am, this afternoon to discuss what those associated costs are with those options. So hopefully, they're a lot better than the last numbers I looked at, but unfortunately, I still anticipate that it's going to go over budget than what we was figuring, because we estimated the budget based off of the existing equipment, not realizing that four of those pieces of equipment, as of, as far as we can tell, may not have met the code requirement when the building was built. So we've got to, you know, we've got to do our due diligence in meeting all code requirements when we, we do a project of this size, so we want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, so.
Well, thank you for catching it. It couldn't have been worse.
Yeah, that's why we, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at putting it out for bid, but we had some equipment costs that come, equipment cost estimates that come back from the distributor that were, noticed that they were the incorrect equipment that they had, they had quoted as pricing for, so we requested updated pricing, and then that's when it, the equipment come back and we realized, well, it's not only the equipment's more expensive, but that's when we noticed the size, the physical size of it, so then we had to look at making sure that we weren't going to create a whole other problem by setting that equipment in the existing location, so kind of had to go back to the drawing board, but.
Good catch.
Thank you. And then the FEMA grant application for upsizing the generator at this facility, that has been submitted, got some hard numbers back, basically ended up applying for three different grants under one application. They all have a different rate of payout, don't have a date is when they will make a decision, other than hopefully I know in a few weeks is what. But I worked with Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Basically, they have three different grants that you can apply for, and they're broke down as FEMA would cover seventy-five percent of the cost of the project, and then the state would cover ten percent. Now with the total cost of the project, they got to determine what FEMA feels the percent of the building qualifies for having a use in an emergency situation. So I worked with, and it was determined that ninety-three percent of this facility would be utilized in an emergency or disaster event, which is a very good number. So with the total installation cost, which does not include any engineering or design fees, because depending on the timing of when they release whatever funds are left, and they determine that the project is approved, then you, you may or may not be able to submit design and engineering costs under that grant application. So the numbers that I'm going to read off do not include the design and engineering fees is falling underneath the grant. So basically, it was determined that total installation cost would be five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Ninety-three percent of that qualifies underneath the grant, which equates to five hundred and five thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The worst-case grant application is what they call the FEMA seventy-five percent share, which they would cover seventy-five percent of the ninety-three percent qualifying cost. And then the state would cover ten percent of the total, which, and so it kind of comes out to the county's share would be one hundred and ten thousand, fifty-two dollars, plus what I estimate would be about thirty-five thousand in design and engineering fees, plus ten percent contingency, because I think ten percent is probably a more realistic number, given the location that the generator has to sit on this property, and the fact that there is basically an underground vault that is below part of that parking lot where, yeah, it's the old boiler room. So the generator can't sit over top of that. So I feel that ten percent is probably a better, because normally in this type of project, I would go with about a four or a five percent contingency, because it's pretty straightforward install, but given the location of this particular generator, I felt ten percent was probably a better number to use. Which brings us to total out-of-pocket cost could be about just under two hundred thousand. Now, the next one is what they call a FEMA eighty-five percent share. Same basic total cost estimate, same ninety-three percent applies, the same state ten percent applies. And then that would, the county's share on that one would be fifty-nine thousand, five eleven, plus the thirty-five thousand design, and then a ten percent contingency, which would bring total out-of-pocket cost up to one forty-eight, eight fifty-eight. The next one would be the FEMA ninety-five percent. Cost share, I can go through all the numbers again, but basically the bottom line on that would be about ninety-eight thousand, two seventy-two. Now, obviously, with each one, the percent of chance of it being approved goes down, and then worst-case scenario is, it's, they choose. and then worst-case scenario is it's, they choose that doesn't qualify and FEMA denies the application, you know, which is an option, or other projects, other submitted applications take priority, they feel are a higher priority than the generator at this facility, so then the application for this year is shelved. Or they prioritize based off of how many projects are submitted and there's only X amount of dollars left and they say that it's, yeah, we approve the project, but there's only X amount of dollars left, are you interested in taking that and then covering the rest? Now, I will know more on the application hopefully in a few weeks. Like I said, that was the closest I could get them to pin down a date when they would, because they haven't put a closing date on applications yet, because they're still reaching out and to different communities, trying to entice them to submit applications, so.
So any sense, I mean, where we might stand, I mean, the thing that, the thing you said that was interesting to me is the, the assessment that ninety-three percent of this building
Yep.
would be needed to be operational during an emergency. If that's anywhere near, you know, any, within any of the criteria, seems to be a positive indicator.
Yeah, it is. I mean, a lot of it's got to do with what Story County has done with their COOP COG.
Mm-hmm.
Really laid out what we are going to do with this facility in those types of events, you know, and there's a lot of pieces of that puzzle as, you know, you all know, so that really helped. I mean, it's still, we had to go through, because just on the surface of what they consider a normal county government administration building, it would have fallen in the thirty to thirty-five percent qualifying range, because basically they just, they have their major offices and departments that they consider are needed, which, you know, Emergency Management and Planning and Develop, Development IT are ones that they feel that, yes, those always qualify, but since we lay out certain parameters in our COOP COG, even underneath the public portion of that document, then I could, I went through room by room and laid out, you know, how it would be utilized, because some areas, you know, we might bring a different agency in to utilize that space in an emergency event. So it come down to ninety-three percent of the facility, which basically it was everything except the treasurer's office. And I tried really hard to sell that, but ultimately I couldn't get it done, but treasurer's office.
Dad!
You know, because I feel that it is a very critical office in a disaster event, but per FEMA's requirements, it didn't meet, but still ninety-three percent of the entire facility is a good number, so.
It sounds like it was an incredibly laborious process for you and what Melissa.
Yeah, Melissa Spencer in Emergency Management was very critical in helping push this along too. It was, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of homework, a lot of questions, but I think in the end, if the grant application is approved, it is a, it is a huge benefit to the community to be able to have the entire facility on generator backup.
Thanks for the work.
I mean, you, you look at the numbers, you know, you're looking at over a half a million dollars and we could potentially do it for less than a hundred.
What's the turnaround time on this?
Um, it should be within a calendar year from the approval of the grant application that we could have the new generator installed and running and operational, so.
Sound time for next winter.
Yep, exactly, which, and there's one last little piece to that is the existing generator that is here. That on the market to sell it, it's worth less than ten thousand dollars. And the reason that is, is because you gotta physically move it. So anybody willing to purchase it is going to have quite a large amount invested in relocating it to where they want to put it. So the best course of action is, is to try to utilize it somewhere else. And the last time we talked, we had discussed about, you know, maybe putting it at the engineer's complex and initial look at it was as it wasn't going to work, but then I discovered that the generator itself can be rewired to accommodate the power requirement for the engineer's complex. So I kinda put some rough numbers together. If that was to happen, basically it would be relocate it to the engineer's complex and it would be sized large enough to handle the engineer's office building and then their large secondary roads, maintenance shop, and they have some offices there. Total cost to relocate it would be roughly about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
That includes to rewire them?
That's to rewire it, that's to, you'd have to change, because their maintenance garage, shop and some, and then I think like their, their roads, superintendent's offices are in that building. It is currently on its own electrical service and it's not tied into the engineer's building itself. So you'd have to rewire that and then do some rewiring in the engineer's building to put the transfer switch and then you got the associated concrete slab and footings and then crane to pick it up, move it over there, reset it, about, yeah, a total cost, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So how old is that generator?
Uh, two thousand and four is when it was purchased new.
So what's the life of that?
Uh, life expectancy is, is, I mean, FEMA considers the life expectancy of a generator at twenty-five years. Good maintenance, I mean, forty years is, I mean, it's a diesel generator of high quality in forty years and we, we take care of, Story County does a good job of taking care of it, you know, rigorous maintenance and upkeep on it, so yeah, forty years is easily expected for life expectancy on it, so.
You know, because twenty-five years would really, two thousand and twenty-nine, that'd be another ten.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Clearly less expensive than.
Yeah.
To get a new one.
Yeah, because if you were to purchase today, today's cost, if you were just to flat-out purchase that generator, and that's not installed, the one that we currently have on the property, it would be about between a hundred and a hundred and fifty to buy the, to buy that generator and the associated transfer switch with it, and then probably another hundred to have it installed.
Well, if, you know, my thought is, you know, ten thousand is nothing.
No.
And if we are activating emergency plan, particularly because of, you know, weather problems or whatever, secondary roads is a pretty critical part of any.
I agree.
Emergency planning, so if we can, you know, it's certainly something to look at.
Yep. Yep, I just figured I'd have some numbers for you, so to kind of plant in the back of your mind, so if we are presented with the opportunity to upgrade this generator, then we can think about if we do something with the current generator or, because they would, most generator manufacturers would take it in on trade and it would be roughly around that nine to ten thousand dollar range as a trade-in value as well.
So decisions on down the road on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, but I just figured I, I got some good hard numbers, so I figured I'd update you on it while I was here.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Any questions for Joby?
Nope. No, thank you.
Thanks for all the information.
You bet.
And we have one more report here, Mike Cox from the Conservation Department.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning.
I know, I told you.
Just made it.
Yeah, good morning.
All right, well, I think you should have a written report here as well this time. I'm just gonna go over some, real quickly here, give you some update on some projects that we've been working on, mostly construction projects here. Please let me know if you have any questions, but the first one on the list, of course, is the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. You know, it took some time to get all of our easements negotiated, secured for the last phase, which is the trail connection. And again, that trail connection will go from, from the middle roundabout, if you will, on university to kind of a diagonal using an old rail alignment to Two Sixtieth Street, stay north of Two Sixtieth Street on the north side of the existing right-of-way, which is land that was given at no charge by the university all the way over to R-38. So that's the route alignment. I am waiting on one final letter of non-objection from one of the utility companies there, which is forthcoming, and, and then we'll be ready to go with that. Our plan is to have a project, have all of the design done, so we can let bids this winter yet for spring construction, so.
So I just want to pass on to you that I was at a meeting a few weeks ago, a service club meeting, and one of the people there is a professor in dairy science.
Oh.
And she's already turned in a proposal to her dean to set up an ice cream and.
Oh, is that right?
Bar, and so she was asking, have you guys finalized, where is it gonna run? Is it gonna run right by the dairy farm? So, yes, so it may be a couple of years away, but she was thrilled to hear about that, but you're gonna have refreshments, right?
Oh, interesting.
Right at the dairy farm, if she has anything to say about it, yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, that's, that just, one of the reasons that the university's been such a good partner on this, of course, they see the benefit for their operations and their students and, and this provides a way for students to get out if they're, whether it's classes or whether it's work, at any one of their research farms out there, the dairy farm, the Ag 450 farm, several of them there, then, then this is another mechanism for them to do that, so they've been very supportive. Speaking of trails, Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, we did have the grand opening of the first phase of the paving this summer and so that first phase again is from Slater. We paved two and a half miles there from Slater, eastward to Five Thirty-Fifth Street, which is where the trail, if you will, the original railroad alignment or route ends at that point, because there was a small section of rail there that went into private ownership before the county acquired it. So we intersect with Five Thirty-Fifth Street. Next year, next summer, I believe it's in our engineer's work plan then to pave that quarter-mile section of Five Thirty-Fifth, which would have, which would allow hard surfacing all the way from Slater into Huxley. So, so that's, that's partial, been partially completed and scheduled to be, the rest of it completed next year. And, you know, we're moving right ahead, there's just been a lot of energy regionally on the Heart of Iowa Trail and a lot of enthusiasm about it and it's, it's, of course, we're really excited to see that. We've been, we've had our hands in the air for many years trying to get, you know, get some more support for the trail and now that's being recognized. So as you know, we were able to get some additional grant funding to do Phase Two of the project. Phase Two of the project is from Five Sixtieth Street, which is on the east side of Huxley at Trail Ridge Park. From Five Sixtieth over to Cambridge and more specifically to our Skunk River Bridge, which is just on the east side of Cambridge. So we were able to, to receive some grant support for that and now we're underway with our, with our planning or our design work for that. The city of Huxley is going to be straightening Five Sixtieth Street and that does make a bend right there where our trail intersects with it. And so our engineers are working with the city engineers or Darren's engineers as well to coordinate that, because both are scheduled to be completed next year, next summer. Any questions on the Heart of Iowa? We'll continue to march forward. Our goal is to march through and, and get it all paved, all, all the way across the county. With the correction of this one gap that I talked about on the gravel road west of Huxley, that leaves one more gap in continuity in the trail and that is on the east side of Collins. So soon we'll be able to start putting some resources toward identifying a solution for that gap, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. Prairie Rail Trail, you know, that, the construction project there from Highway Sixty-Five into Zearing has been moving forward and the contractor there wasn't able to get it completed at significant weather delays, rain and the such this year, and so it's not completed at the moment. The project is, will be dormant now through the winter and completed in the spring. And you all should have on your calendars, again, speaking of the Prairie Rail Trail, a listening session scheduled for January fourteenth, six o'clock in McCall'sburg, and I think we're all set on that. I think that was the date that worked out for, for the most people. All the cities have responded, I think there might be one city that, that wasn't able to make it at that point, but I'm gonna work with them and see if they can get a representative there. And so feel free to pass that date along as well and, and we look forward to a good turnout at that.
Which city was that?
I'm sorry, was it?
Which city was it?
I believe it was Roland.
Oh, okay.
Didn't work out for the mayor or for the clerk that day.
I'm actually seeing the mayor tonight, I'll ask him, really pressure him to try and send somebody over.
Oh, yeah, there, there is interest. I was at another community function and had some other community members from Roland come forward and, and want to talk about the trail, so there, there is interest there in Roland to, to, to discuss the trail. Moving on, let's go to Hickory Grove, our beach house project and lake renovation project. You know, when we were able to do the Dakens Lake project, when we did the construction there, the new campground, new lake, et cetera, well, we thought that that was one of those, you know, large generational projects, and which it certainly was, but ever since then, we've had a number of those. When you talk about Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor now, when we're talking about the renovation at Hickory Grove Lake, it's significant work and, you know, this, this renovation at the lake, as you, as you probably all are aware, but, but started over ten years ago, when we knew we had to address water quality issues there and had to get that done prior to really being fiscally responsible with, with doing improvements in the lake itself. And so now we are there and we've been there with the support of the DNR and many other organizations. And so it's really encouraging. Our construction itself, construction project progress itself, that firm has been, has been really making, making really quick work, they've been moving along really well. They're working on some, kind of some final things right now, some armoring, some, some trail work around the lake and there'll be some work yet that they need to do yet in the spring. They're working on a final drawdown right now on the water that's remaining in the lake and so, but we expect that that'll go well. And are planning for an opening in the spring as, as Mother Nature works with us and hopefully we get some more precipitation in the spring to make a fill go fast. We have learned through this process that that lake, a one-hundred acre lake, four-thousand acre watershed, can fill in a matter of hours and it's, it's quite interesting how quickly that water, that lake fills up. But I remember this, the stories, when the lake was originally built and the old, the story goes that it basically filled overnight. goes that it basically filled overnight with one rain event, and I always kind of doubted that, but now, seeing what's happened thus far with construction and trying to draw it down and filling up repeatedly, we believe it. The beach house at Hickory is, as of yesterday, significantly complete, so that'll be ready for spring opening. We'll need to do some seeding around it and the such, but the construction contract is, is complete now, and, and so that'll be a nice addition. Colo Fire Department came out and burned the, the old shelter, and so now that's been removed, or at least some rubble some, to be removed yet. What's left of the concrete there will go into the lake for fish structure, and so that'll be a nice addition to the lake as well. So that's moving forward. Let's shift gears now, back up to Dakens. In regard to the cabin, we are still, I don't have any, you know, any significant news to give you on the cabin, other than we are still moving forward. We have a, kind of a cabin design committee that is, has now met again, and, you know, been broached with the question of, well, now we can't do our Plan A, what's our Plan B? And Plan B is still doing something there. The Conservation Board is still committed to a cabin at Dakens Lake, and so we're looking at more cost-effective options for that. We're probably looking at some kind of modular or prefabricated building that will go in there, but we're still just exploring some options at the moment.
Mike, are you still thinking that that might be, you might be ready to have that discussion when we do budget workshops in January? Or are you looking at this will definitely be a fiscal year 21 project? Don't even think about anything happening for the rest of '20?
Well, I would hope that by our budget work sessions, we'd be able to have some more, some more discussion about the, kind of a cost opinion for the cabin. We won't have it constructed in this FY.
Okay.
I say that. I guess there's a slight chance that we could, but it's not a very high chance. Odds are, it's gonna bleed over into the next FY into '21.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one of the things that, you know, to get that, to get that cost on that cabin down, we're looking at, and I know, Loris, you brought this up in the past before, but we're looking at a smaller cabin as well, not quite as big, and we're looking at less sustainable energy techniques in it, but still including what we can, so still including a modest level of sustainable energy, probably not geothermal, which is one we had in the other, in the original plan, so. But we're moving forward, and I'll keep you posted on that. We do have another date to put on your calendars, if you're interested. December 11th, 6 o'clock, at the Ames Public Library, we're having a public meeting on the Panham's Mill Lowhead Dam mitigation project. Last remaining lowhead dam in existence in the county, and we've got Houston Engineering working with us on developing some concepts for mitigation. So what does that mean? That means mitigating or kind of reconfiguring the structure and somehow to alleviate safety concerns and alleviate fish, fish passage concerns. So those two things, really. First and foremost is the safety concerns. And so they're going to present, I believe, three options, and we'll get public input on those options. One option includes a complete removal, and other options are partial removal. And so be interested in getting, getting the most, you know, as much public input as we can on, on which design to, which route to go forward with on that. Any questions on that one? I guess last of the, kind of the construction-type projects is the Corps of Engineers and the trail there, or I should say, the Green Belt period. I won't belabor this, this has gone on for so long, but, you know, we signed an agreement in, in October of '17, this two-year agreement for the Corps to, to go through their disposal requirements and to get it deeded over to us, roughly 200 acres. And they're, they are in process, and I'll give them kudos for that. They are working forward. They have not been able to meet their, their deadline, and so we'll just continue to work with them on that. They are doing, they are going through it, and their project manager is, is doing a, I consider to be a really good job on, on keeping the process rolling at the Corps. And so I expect that the, expect now that it's going to be, I hesitate to even put a date out there, but it might not even be '20 when we get the property. It might be the first part of '21.
And when did we start the process?
Oh, you don't want to ask that. As far as in Ernst, the disposal was when we signed the agreement in October of '17.
But how many years do you even get to that point?
Well, they had a congressional mandate in 2008 to transfer it to the county within 180 days.
So we're 11 days, years, yeah.
Really? So.
So much for congressional mandate?
Yes, yeah.
Goodness.
Yeah, so, but they are moving forward, and so I guess what's this, the saying, patience is a virtue. What this land will do, once we do get title to it, is, is really improve that green belt, the, the water buffer, the green belt buffer, the recreational amenities there along the river, and north of town between Ames and, and Story City. We'll really, really be able to help us improve that in ways that we haven't been able to do since we acquired that, much of that land, when the Ames Lake Reservoir Project did not happen. And it's interesting, some people out there, I've heard sentiments now that since we're moving forward with the Corps, that, that the lake project is coming back forward, and I want to say there couldn't be anything further from the truth, that that lake project has been de-cessioned, and it will not happen. But what we'll be able to do with this land is, is really augment that trail system, and like I said, that green belt system. So that will, that will have multiple recreational benefits, water quality benefits, wildlife habitat benefits, et cetera. So it'll be nice when that finally does happen. It is gonna take a lot of time to sort through it. Once we get the property, then we'll have to enter into another lengthy process of disposing it, selling it, trading it, different portions ourselves, and so that will take some time. Once we get it, we're not done. So. Questions on that?
I know you've got a lot of landowners there who are anxious to be part of that process, and
Many.
Very supportive of it.
Yes, yes, yes.
So maybe we'll get it off the impaired waterways list?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can we get it off the impaired waterways list?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe not on our own. We've got other things to do.
Someday that will make that happen. Someday we'll make that happen. Lastly, I just want to say, speaking of, speaking of waterways, we did have a cleanup at McFarland Lake, and we did have a cleanup at Hickory Grove Lake, public events, and those went quite well. Our educators have been doing just a phenomenal job, as they always do. I think that, you know, you, you hear me come and talk about some of our initiatives when it comes to these construction projects or development projects. You don't hear me enough come and sing the praises of our environmental education program, who's out there just doing the day-to-day in the classes, in the schools, and leading hikes, or whatever it may be, and just doing a phenomenal job. You've heard us talk about their recognitions locally, regionally, state, and nationally even, and very well deserved, very well deserved. So thanks to, it looks like, thanks to Joby, he and his crew are working on the multipurpose room that we have at McFarland at the Conservation Center, and as we speak today, we had to relocate one of these educational events to, to accommodate the work that's, the renovation that's being done by Joby's crew. It'll be really nice when that does happen, when that gets completed. Joby's been great to work with, his crew's been great to work with, that building will be, or that room will be much more, much more meeting-friendly, user-friendly, sound issues will be addressed, lighting issues will be addressed, and therefore. So it'll be a nice addition, but in the moment, we're having our, our monthly OWLS, Older, Wiser, Lifelier Seniors Program at North Crest, and, and so we'll be doing it there for the next couple of months while, while the building's being renovated, or while that room's being renovated. So, any questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, we're down, if we're on the way to the bottom, I do have a question. Common ground initiative?
Oh, yeah.
What's the common ground initiative?
Yeah. So, you know, and I was trying to think of what the, the right term for that is. It's documented storytelling, so it's videoed storytelling that gets preserved, and it's, it's a larger initiative that we're just a part of, and helping establish that, that pool, if you will, of, of kind of a cultural narrative. And it's specific to experiences in nature, or how people have enjoyed nature over their lifetimes. And so that's what, that's what it is. You know, maybe that special time when, you know, pick, pick a, pick a scenario, that those special moments in people's lives when they were outdoors and, and enjoying nature. So, so that's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That I wanted to tell you, I said this at the beginning of the meeting, but you weren't here yet, so I was very, very impressed with the bird-friendly application.
Oh, very good.
And the amount of detail and the different people you got to bring in content into that. It was very informative and, wow, well done.
Yeah.
Somebody should get a, probably a master's degree just off of that.
Very good. I tell you what, we're, we're so fortunate, we've got a number of very, very highly educated, very professional bird enthusiasts in the county. I'm very passionate about it, and, and so it wasn't easy to, or I should say, it wasn't hard to drum up some, some support in pulling that information together. Kudos to Jerry and his staff. Amelia did, did a large portion of that as well, and she did a fabulous job, too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have no other reports on our agenda, so we'll go to upcoming agenda items, and we've decided that we are going to have, oh, Mike, I do have one. Oh, Alyssa's got something. Never mind, we're backing down.
Sorry, this isn't an upcoming agenda item, but I just, I realized, I apologize. The board approved the term of Kelly Winfrey earlier in the agenda.
Yes.
And it's six years instead of five. It should be 1231 and 24. I don't know if that got changed.
Oh.
Somehow, I just noticed on the agenda, it was January 1st of '20 to 1231 and '25, and that would be a six-year term instead of five. So if the board's able to go back and make that correction during the meeting, otherwise I can.
Let's, a two-thirds motion, we can reconsider an action that was taken during the meeting. So is there a motion to reconsider?
I saw move.
Second.
Okay, and then is there a motion to amend, to make?
I think we have to vote on the one first, right?
We probably need to, what's the word? Get rid of the previous motion. What would you call that?
Rescind?
Rescind. Let's rescind the, a motion to rescind the previous motion. Now, on, excuse me, let me find.
Yeah, I'm looking for item number four, and I apologize, I didn't catch it during the.
Well, thank you for getting.
Yeah, if I did my math right, it should be January 1st of '20 to 1231 and '24. That would be a five, full five-year term.
Okay. Which agenda item was?
Number four, under additional items.
Oh.
The Planning and Zoning Commission one was correct.
Okay.
Later on.
Okay, well, there was a motion to rescind. Did we get that done?
No.
Where are we?
Yeah.
You already moved and seconded the approval to, let's finish that one.
To go back.
Yeah.
Let's, let's finish the first one.
Reconsider.
What do you have? We didn't vote on the reconsideration. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
To the approval of, for Kelly for a five-year term ending 1231, '24, roll call vote, and then rescind.
No. That's the new one. It was on the agenda through the 20, 2025, and it should be 2024.
Is that right?
That's what I said.
Five years, so you got, you got calendar year 20, '21, '22, '23, and '24 would be a five-year term.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider that motion and a second.
Correct.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Okay. Now, we're reconsidering the motion.
I move to rescind the motion to appoint Kelly Winfrey to a six-year term, or the term ending 1230, '25.
1231, '25.
1231, '25. Period.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me. I think we did a motion for both people. That's the problem. We have to re, we're.
Okay, got it, we did.
The motion included both.
And for Wendy Snyder, for ending 12, because I don't have my thing up anymore.
1231, '23.
Twenty-three.
That sounds good. Twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. I would entertain a new motion.
I move that we appoint Wendy Snyder to the Board of Adjustment with a term ending 1231, '23, and to appoint Kelly Winfrey for the term of January 1st, '20 through 1231, '24.
I second the motion.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye.
Again, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
I just didn't want to get done and then have to come back next week, so.
You caught it, so good, you caught it, yeah.
So.
Upcoming agenda items.
Upcoming agenda items. We're going to, once again, have the naming proposal on for the town. Are there any other things that are already in the loop that we want to?
We'll have the economic development discussion, and there'll be different, different information for us to help us kind of guide that discussion.
Okay, are you going to present that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Okay, any other items?
Not that I can consider, yeah.
Okay. Now, we have public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda that may not take any action because of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Are there any members of the public who have any comments? Okay. If not, I will add a comment now that Auditor Martin said she was going to bring up if she was going to be here, but since it's an election day, she's kind of busy, and that's what it was about.
Yeah.
She wanted me to remind everybody, today is the Ward Four in the city of Ames runoff election. Polls are open till 8:00 PM today. If anybody has any questions about their poll in place, they can consult the auditor's website, or they can call 382-7210. So we hope everybody who is eligible to vote in this election votes. Thank you. And I'll close the public forum. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors.
Sure. So this afternoon, I have a Board of Health meeting here in this room, and then I will go to the Prairie Rivers Open House this evening. So I've got for today, tomorrow. We've got a couple drainage district meetings, then we have a meeting with school officials and a meeting with city officials. I believe there are school and city officials, is it just Nevada? Or is it all the schools? Is it all in the community? I just, I wrote. Okay, I just, I wrote down Nevada, so I just want to make sure. And there. I also have, I'm going to be serving on the Stepping Up Steering Committee. It's part of ISAC. It really looks at ways to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jail. So, we've got our first conference call tomorrow afternoon, so I'll be partaking in that for part of the time, because then we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so, the two kind of overlap a little bit. Thursday, we have a department recognition, and then the canvas of today's election. And then, Monday, I have on my calendar a Grant V meeting. I have a meeting with the Urban County Coalition in the afternoon, and then I also have a CICS Children's Advisory, it's our first Children's Advisory Committee meeting.
What's the urban county coalition?
It is new, and actually, it was my former intern from the Legislature who works with a group, and that's, they're coming up to talk to me about a little bit more details to the Urban County Coalition. I know they did some lobbying down at the Capitol, although it wasn't on committees that I served on. But I think what it really kind of looks at is the correlation and the connection in urban areas and county areas, and where there's areas they can work together, and, I don't know, I'm going to find out, I'll find out a little bit more detail come Monday.
Be good to hear about that. Cool. Okay. So, I'm going to try and make the Prairie Meadows Open Houses, Meadows, Prairie Rivers Open House, Prairie Meadows, Prairie Rivers this afternoon. Tomorrow, I'm hanging out with Linda and Lisa at all of those meetings she talked about, and then also going to try and attend the Ames 2040 Comprehensive Plan Meeting. They're on meeting number six of that. I have the Herta Board Meeting on Thursday, and just to let you know, one of the topics we'll be discussing will be Dallas County Services. Dallas County was being served by a subcontractor. It was no longer financially feasible to keep that subcontractor providing those services. There were other issues. That contract was terminated in March, and Dallas County Supervisors left all of the funding they had been giving with that subcontractor, who also provided senior services. Now, that agency has gone out of business, and the Dallas County Supervisors are not giving us any money. So, yeah, so, I, we'll try to get back for that recognition in the early afternoon, but I may still be with Herta. On a more positive note, I met the new employee who's providing services. Did either of you two get out at the Veterans Administration at the supermarket that afternoon?
I was, I was later.
Okay, so, all right, because she was out there, but I don't know if she was there when you were there. But anyway, so, it was nice to know she's out there. They had steady traffic at the Herta booth all day, which is good, because that's why we're paying for her to do outreach.
Oh, yes, I did meet her.
I did meet her.
Oh, good, all right.
I thought you were talking about a county employee.
Oh, no, sorry, no, no, no.
I met her, met her as well, yeah.
Right, so, so, also, thank you for covering the runoff election, and I have community and family resources. So, I do want to give you one bit of a meeting that the Courthouse Security Committee, and about 10 days ago, and I didn't give this update last time, but, and I'm looking, Joby's back there, Todd sits on the committee, too. But I just wanted to note that the U.S. Marshal recently did a security audit of the Justice Center. And so, there are some physical components that are recommended in that, and some, each of you will receive, or maybe have already received a copy of that. If not, it will come at some point, but it is, it's a confidential document, to let you know, okay? But just be aware that that includes some physical requirements that Joby is, is discussing with Micah Anderson and the sheriff on, but don't be surprised if you hear more about that one also. Okay, as far as the money request? I'm done now, thank you. Oh, do you mind? Thank you very much to everybody who may be worried about me last week. A little dramatic there in the afternoon. Noel, and Darla, and Ted Rasmussen were just great about taking care of me until the Officer Hutton from the Nevada Police showed up. He's great. He's, he's well-trained medically, and the ride in the ambulance was interesting, because as soon as they gave me the anti-nausea medication, I was feeling better immediately, and it turns out I had the flu. So, thank you very much, and thank you to everybody. Thanks Linda came and sat with my husband while we were figuring out I only had the flu. So, thank you. Okay.
Glad you're feeling better, and glad you're back.
Thanks.
Let's see, I'll start out with a meeting yesterday morning. Storycom continues to meet monthly. Still, the tower sites are moving ahead, and soon they're going to be testing. We're getting the FCC licenses in place for the towers. We have one tower location yet that's not quite done, but we're still working on it. Then, our working group is doing something called fleet mapping, which is, we're going to have a very complicated shared system for public safety and public works. So, fleet mapping, I actually had to Google it, so I knew what it was, but it's basically, you have to set up how all these subgroups and groups and whatever are going to be talking to each other and, you know, and not talking to each other when they shouldn't be, and it sounds like, it sounds very intricate. I am really looking forward to moving, you know, Storycom, you know, moving forward on this. I think they've made a lot of progress, but it's one of those projects, it's just a moving target. You know, you learn more, things change. We have a business manager now who is doing a very good job of getting all of the, all of the financial arrangements put together, and looking at the budgets, and, and getting updated reports. So, I'm feeling really good about the progress on that. Still looking at, you know, in a couple of months, getting the temporary system up and running.
So, I have a question. The budget was approved in October, if I understood the minutes I looked at, the October minutes. Is there going to be revisions? Is it, is the budget finally done?
It's being continually revised. There's actually three budgets.
Oh, fine.
There's an infrastructure budget, which is actually getting the land, putting up the towers, the radios, controlling units, just all of that. That's the infrastructure budget. There's going to be an ongoing operating budget. And the third one is really the radios. The radios are within the first year. But there's, there, and they're working on the ongoing budget, then, what it's going to cost to maintain the system along, and also to have a replacement fund. So, a lot of the figures, you know, as, as something changes, you know, all of those change. Some of the infrastructure costs for, you know, might change, because, and not because of the equipment that we're buying, because of the land costs as we get tower sites. So, it just kind of keeps, you know.
Well, I know you said that, and so I got confused, so thank you.
There's, there's, I have a spreadsheet on infrastructure that has about 15 tabs. So, yeah, that's one, that's just the infrastructure budget, so then there's only other ones.
Thanks for that. I won't ask for a copy, okay?
I don't think you want to look at it, no. But it, but it's huge, you know, it's a, it's a big collaboration. I am assured that, you know, the system that it is replacing is really a pretty fragile system right now, and that we're going to be, you know, keeping the taxpayers, keeping all our residents safer, and we're going to be keeping our first responders, give them better tools to work on. So, it's, it's a massive project, it's a very needed one, and it's going to be good to have it all done, because we'll have public works, and we'll have public works component as well as having public safety on it. So, I know, Mike, you've got, you're going to have some radios, we're going to have secondary roads on, a lot of people are going to have radios, and that's really necessary for them to be on this system, so. Anyway, all the meetings, most of the meetings that you talked about, I'm going to be at as well. There's a couple more that I will be at. Be good to see at the Open House at Prairie Rivers tonight. Yeah, we do have Drainage District, and another Drainage District meeting, school officials, city officials, planning and zoning, and Ames 2040 I also hope to be at tomorrow night, because I think there's a lot of things that we're looking at in the unincorporated areas that, depending on where Ames goes, their future growth plans, particularly in terms of transportation. You know, that's going to be interesting in roads. Yes, we'll canvass the Ames runoff on Thursday, and then, what else do we have coming up? Another Drainage District meeting on Monday, and I'll have Conservation Board Monday night, correct, Mike? Okay, it's always a good way to check your calendar, do I have everything I need on it? And it looks like we have library directors on the tents also. It'll be at 1:00 after our next board meeting, but we've got a lot of people in, a lot of community meetings. And we'll have Jerry Cable, will be leaving the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we will be honoring him tomorrow for his, his term of service, so. That's all I have. Any other announcements?
No, thanks.
Okay. Entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned, thank you.